And you got Little Caesar's and as you kind of go around the back. And that back end as you go around, that's where the nifty fifty restaurant and it's on the side street facing Echo Street. Uh so the out, the city ordinance requires a use permit for an on sale alcohol. Uh sites developed one hundred forty six restaurant. Again, it was historically a restaurant in the past. Um applicant with their remodel will be, will be downsizing the number of seats to a hundred and twenty. And off sheet parking is available in the shopping center through shared parking agreements through the other businesses that surround the area. Discussion points, we have economic viability for the restaurant. There's neighborhood compatibility, um safety and alcoholic beverage control regulations. Uh we, we find that um it's customary for restaurants particularly that have a dinner hour to have a beer and wine license. In this case, the applicants also, and then when they get presented to you the case why they're looking for spirits to be added and how they would conduct the distribution and sale of spirits, the applicant can explain that to you. Um neighborhood compatibility, um pretty much Echo Street is developed with um commercial facilities. There are some non-conforming multifamily apartments across the street. Uh but we find that there's no um aspect of that beer and wine and spirits would have any issue or in, or incompatibility with any of the, the adjoining properties. Um again, to the north, we have um. The mixed use are the office building with commercial below that has the bottoms up retail, there's a beauty salon. There's a little, um, there's the Pizza Hut strip center across the street, the auto center. And then within the center or around there, we have all the commercial businesses. The residential uses on Phoenix are separated by um some of the buildings that are currently in the shopping center. So they wouldn't have any impact to this use. Um on safety, um city staff finds that the site is suited for a restaurant. The layout is suited and they would not have a separate bar area and the beverages would be um provided by a hostess. So there's nobody coming up to a bar separately that's purchasing alcohol. And on the alcohol beverage control regulations, um the ABC has a limit of nine in this area. There's twelve existing, this would be thirteen. However, the city could on a public finding of convenience necessity, the ABC allows the city to grant that um additional license. Um it's looked at more in terms of where you have convenience stores and maybe bars and full taverns that could have an, that could have an incompatibility. We find that restaurants in the city, we've had, not had any issue with any restaurants currently that operate, that operate this manner in the, in the city seaside. Um the floor plan, this is, um currently they have booths in this area, they're gonna remove them. This should become a waiting area. That's one of the main um interior layout changes they're making. Um the entry stays the same. There's booths that are in the interior, they're removing, replacing them with tables. And then they would be repairing or modifying some of the booths around the window area. The kitchen area and the bathroom area layout remains the same. And here is a viewpoint of the restaurant from Echo. And again, the um entrance to the building faces on the east side to the parking lot that's with Orient and I think a dry cleaner. And then what would now be the jumping around business that's currently remodeling the interior that a commission approved a use permit for probably about um eight months ago. Um city staff has provided a resolution with recommendation for the planning commission to consider granting the use permit. And so at this point, um staff would, um if there's any questions for staff, they can hear from the applicant and then hear any public testimony.
I have a question for staff. You say we have twelve, is that without the shadow box, is that not being the way?
Uh the census tract for this area, I don't know if it goes above to the shadow box, I think it ends at La Salle.
Okay, and second, you say that there, it's gonna be remodeled, but the bathrooms are gonna stay the same, are the bathrooms ADA compliant?
That would be a standard building requirement like that on any change of occupancy.
Okay, just curious, cause he said they're gonna stay the same.
Um well, in this case, the argument's remodeling the interior of the space.
Yeah, once you touch it, it's still underground.
And this area would also have a ramp that would be accessible for the area that was a rain seating area.
Okay. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
I've never done one of these before, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we don't bite, promise.
Oh, thank goodness, it's my birthday, please don't bite me. Yeah, um, I don't, um, is the microphone on? Okay, sorry, uh, um, hi. Um, what would you like to know? We would have lots of information and lots of um examples about this.
Some of the commissioners may have questions for you.
Yeah.
So, any questions?
Uh this is purely out of curiosity, but what sort of restaurant are you opening there?
It's gonna be uh breakfast and lunch with um American classics with uh flick. We want to bring some more of um the eclectic side of your palate to Seaside and really elevate breakfast into a different way that we feel Seaside doesn't have at this point.
Okay, uh, we won't charge you anymore.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment, anybody wishing to speak on this, I think I have four, do some now. Saying no, we'll bring it back to commissioners.
I don't think, I don't.
I don't think of a question now, sorry, I'll put it back. Um you mentioned the, they wanted specifically to sell liquor, so I thought I'd ask what, what was the reason behind that?
Yeah, you go ahead. Um so when we were originally looking at this um format, we wanted to um do breakfast and lunch every day of the week and then open for Fridays and Saturdays all week for dinner. Um and at this point, we figured we wanna scale back on that aspect and really wanna do breakfast and lunch right and when the time presents itself and if the business model can hold it, as well as Michael's been riding on, drowning from lack of sleep, then be able to open up for, for dinner time and we wanna do that. Um with the type forty seven license, we, our goal is not to be a full functioning bar. It's really more of a sustainability to offer something um extra to the customers and be able to say, um hey, you can have this, but doing it ABC regulation style and being very proactive about it. Um I currently manage a bar in downtown Monterey and have done so for the last six and a half years. And I don't want to repeat any of that bringing it into Seaside and for our restaurant. We just don't, we don't want that stop mentality. We've been discussing, you know, um in-house policies about two drinks per hour and that's it, nothing else. And really making sure that we can hold to that because the jumping around is right across the street and it's kids. And we wanna have a hand, uh family to some uh value in, in our food and in will be present to everybody. Thank you.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, we'll close public comment and bring it back to commissioners.
Well, I think it's, it's a good move. I mean, to stay competitive and, and to appeal to everybody, that, that, that is, it sounds like a very good company to, to withdraw from, so.
I agree with the commissioner, I think that to, to be competitive now if you're running a restaurant, especially if you're running restaurants that serve as a night, you, you do need to be able to serve alcohol.
So if I have a motion there?
I move to approve use permit, application number UP eighteen oh.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same none? So good, an appeal may be submitted in writing within seven calendar days. From the date of this meeting, the appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fees. But I doubt you wanna do that, Mr. Gatcher, for now, thank you. Okay, next item upon a use permit, UP eighteen zero six, City of Seaside property owners who play development services applicants who request the approval of use permit to allow wireless and telecommunications facility at the Silverfield. Staff.
Um, one of the first points I should probably indicate in the background is that this is a city-owned property. And we did go to the city council um in twenty eighteen to get permission for the city as proprietor to sign off on the application. So I just wanted to s, to say in terms of how does it, does the city process its own application? We did through, through direction of the council. Any use permit or a wireless telecommunication city um facility requires a conditional use permit. And in this case, this facility would be a freestanding unmanned facility that would be on the sports field light, um that would be in Silver Park. Are, the Silverfield or the park was established in two thousand and four. It was built as part of the Seaside Highlands residential subdivision. Um proposal for the replacement um is for that, for an existing seventy foot tall light tower that is on the southeast portion, which is in the right field area of the baseball field. The surrounding land uses of the park um include the Seaside Highlands residential subdivision that is to the north. There's the Bayview or what people remember as Bostrom Global Home Park to the south. Um further to the east, you have the Sun Bay Apartments, but they're kind of a little bit more of um northeast on that, that direction. As you go up Coe, there's only, it runs in, it runs into the back, then emerges that the house and military avenue kind of converge at that point. Um the high school, the continuation high school, that is to the um west, which was MP, MPUSD owns that facility. That was a former elementary school, um which has been converted now and they use it for the continuation high school. Um that would be to the west and that would account for the primary land uses that surround the property. On location map, um this is the area for Silverfield. Again, this is MPD, MPUSD site, the Seaside Highlands, the Sun Bay Apartments and the Bostrom. Um on aerial photo, uh we just thought it would be nice to give you perspective on the aerial. Again, you can see the high school that's further um to the south. Um and then the, the residential areas that surround as well as the resident, the community of Seaside, that greater community of Seaside that is further to the south. Um I thought I'd start with the site photographs initially. Um these were put in by staff, so they kind of, I try to resemble what the circular Radom screen that would be around the antennas as we'll get into the application explained, where that would be, um this would be where there would be six panel antennas, six, six foot panel antennas. And what they describe as RRUs, these are, this, um, the equipment that's used to function the, the, the antenna site. Um they would be within a screen area. Um I do have another photo sim that the applicants provided, this giving you more representation of what the size that would be and its appearance. If I wanted to give you perspective of where it would be, cause these are photos they took of the existing light pole that is there now. Um and then this is a photo taken from Dahlia Lane. Um this is a photo taken standing at that um southeast corner of the park. This is a photo taken standing um at the corner of Coe Avenue. Um and this is looking through the batting cage. This is an area where the yellow represents where they would be an expansion of the batting cage area to where they would enclose their equipment shelter and generator for the equipment facility. Um all the equipment would be underground to the pole, that would be routed up through the pole, um so there'll, so there'd be no electric cabling that would be visible. Um here's a closer shot, kind of looking through. You can see as you're standing at this point, you're, there's some trees that will conceal a little bit, but the pole and area is right here. Again, the yellow represents where the equipment shelter would be. And. And this is a photo taken from home plate, kind of looking out toward where you would see the equipment shelter. There is a tree that is located within the area, the trip, equipment shelter. And we have conditions in terms of transplanting that tree and actually planting some additional trees. In that this area doesn't function as an area where they warm up. So by adding a few additional trees in that area, it's not gonna impede or hinder any of the kids that would may use that area in the outfield as a warm-up area. And then here's, this is the pole. Um here are photo simulations provided by the applicant. Um this is a viewpoint from Coe Avenue, looking from, this is the bus shelter. And uh this would be. This is a viewpoint um from, I think, yeah, from home plate. And then here's a viewpoint from inside the Bostrom or the Bayview Global Home Park that's further to the south. Whoops. And uh this would be. Looks like another viewpoint, kind of more from the infield area, looking a little closer toward the um apparatus or the tower. And then here's the additional screen that I um inputted as well. Um the, on the project plans, the light tower is sitting here about in the right field area. It's sitting about sixty feet from Dahlia Lane. Um it's a, it's about a thousand or more feet from the, the west area, which is the school site. It's about six hundred and fifty feet, six hundred feet to the nearest residences, um the Seaside Highlands. And about four hundred feet uh looking at the Bostrom Park to the south. Here's another close-up view, this gives you an idea, a location of the equipment shelter, the cabling that would be underground to the, to the light tower. Here's a perspective of the equipment shelter area, it will be the, within the interior of it. And then this is an overhead view of the six panel antennas with the circular Radom screen around it.
How big is that, in diameter?
Applicant, can you, can you handle that?
Six foot nine.
Six foot nine. And I will have to introduce his name, I apologize for calling him that. I just, um, I took a gentleman with the came in this, this evening that we were talking to pretty previously. So this would be the um viewpoint of the um circular um device over the antennas. So the applicant is bringing forward this as a significant, what they've identified, the task rate we, we included in the packet. There's a significant gap in coverage which they've identified in the northern part of the city. Uh this represents the existing coverage. What they're showing here, this is the project site, this is an existing antenna that was recently constructed at nineteen forty nine Waring Street. Um this is a tower that is at, at the top of San Pablo Avenue. And this is a tower that, or a device that's in the Granite Rock facility in San City. Uh this is about um a half mile, a mile in distance. Uh this one probably is about a mile, a little over a mile. And then there's a facility that's up on Giggling Road that's two and a half miles away. What the applicant's identified is that the yellow and the red represent where they have gaps in coverage. The green represents the area that's being actively covered. And with the new application, they would expand the green area into the military housing that is further to the north as well as servicing the Bostrom and the Seaside Highlands area and the Sun Bay Apartments. Um there's an alternative analysis that was completed as part of the application requirements. Um the applicant did identify six other facilities aside from the project site. And in the information provided, they've explained in terms of topographic issues related to how those sites would not be adequate for what they need as well as the vertical infrastructure and the least intrusive means of adding a new um pole or, or to those other sites. Whereas this would be replacing an existing site, existing site with an, an existing seventy foot um light tower. Um I can go from the re, on the record, I can go through the, all of the addresses. There was the Bayonet Black Forest Golf Course, that's number one, that's one curway that's um located here. There is an open space um area on the Seaside Highlands drainage basin, um that would be in the front here. There's the Seaside High School area, there's an existing T-Mobile facility which they identified in their discussion. The Central Coast High School is the joining MPUSD site that is here. There's the former gas station, which is the Shop That Site, which is slated to be developed with a senior housing facility. That's at Coe in Monterey. And then there's the vacant residential parcel, which is directly across the street from the baseball field. Um and use permit considerations, um we have a seventy foot um sports field light tower. And the um, and the telecommunications ordinance, it's identified that there's any dedicated towers um that an existing facility can go on that site, it's on, it's not higher than twenty feet above the existing structure. In this case, the tower is at seventy feet, the antennas will be at a height of between forty-four and fifty-four feet. Uh the antennas would be screened with a silver flat painted um Radom circular um screen. That would be um. Covering both the RRUs and the panel antennas. Um the equipment cabinets, they would be contained within a ten-foot vinyl coated um fence. Uh we would recommend in the conditions of approval to add additionally a mesh screen similar to what you see in tennis courts. So there can be no visibility in, into, to the interior of, of the, of the equipment area. There would be a generator that would be tested um weekly for about um an hour. Um city staff has conditions that, that would be tested on Wednesday, typically between the hours of eleven AM and two PM. It's at, that's at a peak day when people are mainly can be at work as well as people are up and about so that they're not as attentive to noise as what could occur if you were in the evening. Um electric cables will be underground. Um in review of the location, the city's um ordinance requires that there's three aspects. There's commercial residential areas are allowed to be considered, but the, the other areas that are of higher priority would be a city-owned parcel and the second priority would be a PI-owned parcel. Um the applicant did indicate that the PI zones that they looked at in the surrounding area um were owned by MPUSD where they don't have any interest in, in negotiating with the applicant for any facility on, on their site. So that eliminated those facilities, aside from some of the vertical integration that they discussed. And so in this case, this is a site that is city-owned as the open space recreation zone. And we have it discussed that the area where the, um, facility would be located would not interfere or impede any of the existing baseball field use or any use by the public for the access to the park itself. Uh the site is seventy feet from the east boundary, um two hundred and forty feet is being indicated from the south, four hundred and forty to the north and thousand and forty to the west. Um operating characteristics, there was an RF emissions report that was submitted with the application. And in that RF emissions report, it did assess that the percentage that the site would impact the learning area is eight percent of the maximum limits to the residential uses at the ground level. And there would be a twelve percent um emission um for the second, the nearest secondary residence. And this, in this case, would be to the north. The use of the outger, generator is for emergency use only and it would be tested in midday once a week. Um the condition of approval, we do address discontinuation of use, there's a maintenance of the facility. Um we have the tree replacement of the tree that would be located within the equipment shelter. Um there is the RF occupational safety, so there would be signs required to be placed at the bottom of the pole as well as the um lockout for anybody to avoid climbing the pole. This is standard language that would be placed so that any um vandals or trespassers and occupational safety aspects will be met per FCC guidelines. And there's a time period of ten years for the operation of, of the facility, at which at that time it would have to be renewed by the city seaside. Um legal issues, um this begins with the Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six. Um I'll give you a summary of some of the issues here, but we do have our legal counsel available this evening giving further details or information that you may wanna know in terms of what are some prohibitions that the city has in relation to regulating this use based on health effects. It would basically have to be, be reviewed on a land use basis. And if there's any aspects of findings that the commission would consider or, or disagree with in the staff recommendation, they can evaluate that with staff and both our, our legal counsel. Um the Telecommunication Act regulates in terms of limits, particularly in the RF emissions, in terms of what the cities are allowed to, uh, are, are not allowed to um evaluate if the project is below what the FCC thresholds are established. In this case, the project has provided that through the RF emissions report. Um effective prohibition um would basically be to deny this based on not substantial evidence in the record. So we would have to have substantial evidence in the record for approval or any denial of the application. Um the RF emissions, again, we identified that they meet the percentages that's established by the FCC. And least intrusive means is another aspect that's evaluated in that how a facility is located. Does it have the ability to blend in and be less intrusive in terms of its appearance than if it were to be freestanding or established in the other alternative areas that the applicant has identified on their, um, alternative analysis now? Um the applicant did look at condition eight and they did inquire that there was concern about having to comply with um an app, to submit all any FCC guideline changes. They're required within thirty days of that such change to submit to the community development department um report prepared by qualified um engineer that demonstrates how they would remedy that situation. Um what we've added in the condition is that the thirty, the time period may be extended by community development director for good cause. And we would evaluate whether it's an RF emission issue that needs immediate attention or whether it's some, some other aspect that doesn't have an emission in, effect. But it does um require some type of mechanical or other change to the device that would not have any immediate effect on health, safety, welfare. We would consider whether we can give the additional, additional time to consider that change. As, as the condition was written, it did not include what was in red. Um in evaluation of the findings, um we have, have identified in the resolution, um how the project itself complies with applicable zoning and that's placed within a park area that's an ancillary use of a park, which we find is an MP the access to the park. And per the zoning code, it's a city-owned facility. So we find that this is an, is an accessible accessory use, which could be permitted without impacting health, safety, welfare of the community. Uh the design itself is a least intrusive means, provides a, a, a screen around it so that the apparatus itself, the panel antennas are not visible um to the public eye as well as cabling. Um the site's physically suitable for this in that there's existing infrastructure available um with the electrical cabling and the electrical outlets and the power to be able to, to service the antenna. And the site, um again, would not have any detrimental impact on the health, safety, welfare based on the least intrusive means and how it would be positioned and replaced the existing left sports field light tower. Um city staff um also has identified the findings and evidence for compliance with seventeen point five four, which is the telecommunications ordinance of the city. So city staff has included, again, in the resolution, the findings and evidence for the planning commission's consideration on this aspect, on the, on this, on this project and included a recommendation for the commission to recommend granting the use permit.
Okay, I got one question for staff really quick, because you've come and dict yourself three times. You said it's going on an existing pole, then you tell me it's going on a new pole, and then you just said a new pole again. And it says this in, in your, in your document here. On the very first page, it says that it's going on a, a new seventy foot stadium pole. But then you turn the page over here to the second paragraph down that says existing seventy foot light pole. Which is, is it a new pole or is it going on the?
It's a replacement of the existing pole.
Okay, and really quick, what is the weight of this thing, forty feet of, on this pole?
Applicant, can I address that for you?
Any other questions for staff?
I have questions. Were residents notified?
Yes. We rep, we, well, we rep, we noticed three hundred feet from the edge of the Seaside Highlands and the HOA for the Highlands was also notified. And we included a three hundred foot radius into Bostrom Park.
Another question, you mentioned that existing towers, uh, they didn't run at some kind of a, isn't that one a continual part?
That is not operated by Verizon.
Okay, and one more question. I notice when I'm driving that there are a lot of towers that are camouflaged by a tree type thing, is that a possibility rather than just having a stark ugly tower?
If that were the case, it would be a new tree monopole as compared to, yeah, i- if you were to add a new tree monopole in the background, that would be a consideration the planning commission could discuss with the applicant. I think that's what they call monopines or monotrees.
I think trees, whatever they are, yeah, it's with that thing.
Could you bring up the pictures of the tower again?
You looking at the photo sims or the existing pictures I took?
The, the ones that you've got here. The the ones that you've got here. But then one, we're looking for that. You also mentioned Rick that the tree was going to be moved and then you said it's going to be replaced. Which one is it?
We would.
Like moving it?
It would be we would investigate not only planning utilities but also how the existing tree is transplanted. That we feel that that tree can be transplanted rather than just be spread out.
My last question, sound desacles for this generator. You you mentioned it's going to be tested when people aren't home so that it's less impact on the residents. What about when a game's going on, we lose power, how will that affect the field when this generator kicks on and starts running while the kids are playing a game or whatever?
It shouldn't impact the existing lights on the facility.
Not not the lights, the sounds. When this generator kicks on, how like what is the do we?
It's sixty-five decibels is the maximum noise level.
Uh-huh. That means nothing to me.
Was compared to sixty-five?
To sixty-five loud because I think thirty is pretty close.
Now it would only operate in the case of emergencies so it's not.
Well, yeah, but emergency could be when a game's going on. That's what I'm that's what I'm questioning here because you're asking us to take a field that was set up for this and become that. And we're we're also looking at a light standard that was too light for field for kids to play baseball and stuff like that. But now we're we're going to transpose it into a tower. Which by law is legal, but it's our job obviously to look at aesthetics. When you say non-intrusive, I would hate to think that you think that's non-intrusive because I would hate to think what intrusive would be because I could see that clearly not being a pole, a big piece of that hanging from the light standard that was meant to light the field. So. Yeah, my work will be for the applicant.
Here's the link, here's the.
And will this benefit sofa field, whatever fees that Verizon pays for the city? Will this be something that we could get behind because it's going to benefit the kids? Or is this just this has nothing to do with the field other than it being on that property that the city owns?
The use from an act you're taking has nothing to do with that, the the contract that the council established with the applicant would be that would be the council of?
I have one. What was the thought process of putting the generator right next to the batting cage?
It's in an area that is closest to the tower without it being a separate standalone facility. It'd be added on to the existing batting cage so it would blend in with the extension of the batting cage.
Did you look at any other places that not so close to the batting cage?
No.
I have a question. I read somewhere in the packet that the applicant is required. Should there be any more additions to this facility and they would have to pick existing facilities or new facilities? Is there any possibility that this might get expanded and become a multi-use site for other things that Verizon needs to build?
I would not, other than antennas? Are we talking telecommunications only?
Well, that's, you know, I I'm unfamiliar with the industry so I I guess what I'm I'm I'd want to know if, you know, is this a way for the infrastructure to start getting put on this site and then it builds from there? Is there going to be a chance of that happening?
Legal counsel can address that question.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at this point is where we will address our question with the commission until we're on the topic.
Maybe it was easier for us to sort of shore.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Michael Johnson, the the city's attorney on this matter. I'm a telecom lawyer, we're based out of Los Angeles and San Diego. And we've been advising the city on various telecommunications issues for a number of years. With respect to your your question, Commissioner, first, the city as the property owner would have authority to determine what additional equipment will go on. Since the city owns this this particular light structure, it's already proved the equipment as the property owner. If the city doesn't want to allow an expansion, it doesn't have to. If the city were not the property owner, there's certain federal laws that mandate modifications by right. But since the city is the property owner, it would have authority as as the landowner to to say no to future expansions.
I have a question, does the city have any restrictions on how close these can be? Because I noticed in this picture, there's three light poles of the same height. If another telecom came and said, we want to put one on this other pole, what's the city's position on this or fifth thing?
The city as the proprietor could say that could say no if they feel there's more than one is adequate to service that park itself.
And there is no official restriction.
There's no official restriction, no. But it, no, there's none.
What if it's a different cell carrier?
The city council would.
Verizon say H and T comes forward and says, well, we like that pole three to the right.
As we addressed with the council previously, they would have to accept processing the application. And then secondly, would they have to come back for the planning commission for for your approval?
But the city does have the ability to restrict it. They they're not under the in the FCC's guidelines in terms of what can be allowed and not be allowed as a.
As proprietor?
The the city's wearing two hats in this scenario as the property owner and as as a regulator. You folks are acting as the regulator, the city, the city council is acting as the property owner. The city, the city council can decide whether or not they want to lease space, at least an additional structure for this use. That that's a separate distinction. If the if they say yes, the planning commission still have the authority to determine whether or not they want to, you know, have put there for aesthetic purposes.
I I'm just wondering if another telecom could say to the city, you allowed that here, we're also under the same restrictions and you can't deny us for that reason.
Only if the city, potentially if the city allowed it as the property owner first. So that that's that's step one. If they came back to the planning commission, it'd be, you know, a separate evaluation. There's a there's a a piece of federal law that says you can't unreasonably discriminate against functional equipment service providers. So you have a little bit of a hurdle to to say no to that type of facility if it ever got back to the planning commission.
Plus, this is a really strange situation because see, even though the the city council is the owner or the representative of the owner being the city of Seaside, but they're also the ones that overrule us. So you're talking a real double A, I mean, it's it's really odd if you ask me because it's like you give the fox the key to the hen house basically. They can override us, but yet they're also the ones, they're they're being the owner, but they're also being the one that can be the heavy hand that says no. So that's, I think that's where we're going, right?
Yeah.
That really there is no, if they decide they're going to do it.
I have a question, but before I.
No, sorry.
Before I do, I should note for the record that I live in Seaside Highlands. I don't feel like I'm, since I'm brand new and I'm fresh to this, I don't feel like I have any ethical issue with that. But if if anybody does object to me being involved, I should recuse myself, but I think I'm okay personally.
Yeah, because it's far enough away from the Highlands, right?
It's outside three hundred feet.
Right.
Just we went the extra distance so that it was, we felt it was right, the public should be. No.
So my my question is back to the generator, I'm sorry to harp on this, but sixty-five decibels on the the report says on Wednesdays between eleven and three, are we sure that we don't have kids there? Since I do live across the street, I know the answer to this question, but I just want to be sure. Be sure that we don't have kids there if we're going to do it at two o'clock in the afternoon. Exactly, but that's why I wanted to clarify.
The playground is probably about five hundred feet, if not more, about six hundred feet from where the generator would be. There's no playground area on that.
I'm not talking about the playground, I'm talking about kids on the ball field, in the batting cage or on the ball field.
Third possible could be. But again, the summer months.
We just looked at a decimal already, that's sixty-five decimals is a car moving at sixty-five miles an hour on the freeway and you're ten feet away. That's what sixty-five decimals is, they say sometimes. That's what the kids would be under the batting cages if that makes that close. Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll hear from applicant though.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Pete Chubin, I'm with Sequoia Climate Services here tonight representing Verizon Wireless. I've been listening to a lot of questions, staff answered several of them, so I'll take any, if there's anything you'd like me to answer again or answer directly, I'll be glad to do so. First, we have reviewed the conditions of approval including the change to condition number eight. That staff had showed us up on the board and can accept them as amended. I just wanted to let you know that we did look at that and I'm here to take your questions and discuss the site with you. Okay. We'll start with this.
I saw that, for example, the golf course site was looked at, what was the reason you did not pick that site?
The golf course site was looked at, it will function. So we look at things from different aspects, meaning could we put it there and will it function? Then we have to look at, will it be allowed under zoning codes and rules? Then could we actually lease space there? And the golf course has a land situation that does not allow Verizon Wireless to lease space right now. Due to the way the base was closed and the land ownership was handed down to, I believe it's the city of Seaside right now, it's not available for leasing to a wireless carrier. That's why it's not viable and that's why it's not a project that we're presenting to you tonight.
Just for the record, I would I would prefer a site like that just because I don't think it's around children. And there's sort of an isolation, a sense of isolation, this is sort of a community space that everyone's going to see. And I feel like this, like a place like a golf course would have, in my opinion, made better sense. But like you said, we're not considering that tonight.
Yeah. And we we started as staff and discussed, looking at the hierarchy of land ownership and land uses in total with regard to where will wireless carriers directed to look? And wireless carriers are directed in the city's code to look at city properties, which in this area is is the upper part.
Is, I'm having a hard time with having that generator so close to the batting cage. Is can is Verizon willing to move that away from the batting cage?
The the generator goes with the equipment. So what is there in that enclosure that staff talked about is a twenty kilowatt generator. You say, well, how big is a twenty kilowatt generator? It's about thirty brake horsepower. So when you talk about size of engines and how loud they are, that's what we're talking about, we're talking about a thirty horsepower motor. It operates, it's a DC generator, operates like the alternator on your car. Meaning the load that it senses is how hard it works. It's not like a larger AC generator puts out the power, it converts it, it charges the battery. So if the load is low, it is operating slower and quieter. The noise study that was produced that shows it complies with the city's codes was produced that this thing's going on, it's charging everything, it's providing a a full uh full power to the to the facility. The generator is there, a cabinet with some other electronic computer equipment is there. And that's really the switching gear that connects the site to the larger network that goes in that enclosure. We looked at the location next to the batting cage. We looked at the locations along the southern property line of the park, really the right field line, if you will, down along that aspect of it. And what we looked at was out there in left field, in center field where the batting cage is, that was the area of leased activity. We went there when there were games being played, when there were practices, lots of activity on the field, lots of parents in the bleachers, activity on the parking lot side and activity on the site on the the right field side, shady there in the afternoon versus out there in the middle of the field. So if we moved it, we would move that whole enclosure, not just the generator. Now with regard to the generator, when it operates, it's, there's a question regarding, you know, afternoon hours with regard to doing it. It is a start that is triggered by the network operations center. So the city can specify when that is and then it can be programmed. So they could say, you know, eleven to two or, you know, we really want that between ten AM and noon. We want it before lunch, before lunch, somebody comes up in the afternoon, we could control that. And it doesn't run for an hour. What it does is it turns it on, it cycles the motor, it warms it up, goes through a diagnostics test, kind of like your car does. People is familiar with modern cars with OBD two. The computer's constantly monitoring what the car is doing. And it runs its diagnostics and says, okay, we warm up, everything functions, we shut off. And depending on, that depends on a lot of things, the weather, how cold it is, how long it takes. Typically five, ten minutes.
So so if, just to be clear, so this sounds like it's like modulating as needed. So you're saying it may not necessarily ramp all the way up to that high decimal level?
That is correct. And it would only run, generators are expensive to run. So there's a economic incentive to only run it when you absolutely have to. When that is, is there an extended power outage, not just when power goes down because the next cabin next to it, there's batteries there to power the site. So small fluctuations on the power grid, you know, brownouts for a few minutes, don't trigger the generator. If you have a situation where power goes out for several hours or several days, it will keep the site running, it will provide the service and that's when it will run. It is strictly for emergency services and the tested to keep, make sure it's going to operate properly. So what it does is keeps your communication system running in the event of an extended power outage.
So I have a couple of questions since we're kind of on this possible noise nuisance issue. So the first question is, is what would be the closest location of a something that's similar to start that which are proposing that's in operation today? Is there something out there?
All all over. There there this is a.
Like one general.
I would say within ten miles, we could probably give you a handful or a half decibel, decibel.
I just wondered, that may have come across.
Um, you probably came across the old larger AC ones, which are larger units. The DC units are smaller, they've only been out for a couple of years.
So like what's what's one location that you know?
Comes to mind, we just installed one in Bolsonols just north of Salinas.
Okay.
And that is, I mean, that's off the top of my head, I I know that's there, I know it's the same model.
Okay, okay, then.
And that's at a church in a residential area.
Okay, and then my last question is, so going forward with this, if it turns out that there does seem to be some sort of a noise nuisance, can anything be done to the enclosure, like some sort of a buffer or something like that to, you know, I mean, obviously it's not like kind of it's already built, it's there, just deal with it?
There's two ways to handle it that we that we typically see. To answer your question, you know, once it's already there.
Right.
Noise baffling inside, so noise continuation blankets lining the inside of the cabin. So what that would do is we'd put those in there and then any sounds that would resonate off the enclosure itself would be muted. The other way to handle it is with block wall enclosure. And so if this was a block wall enclosure, you have a solid wall enclosure blocking the sound. You have considerable sound attenuation. A block wall enclosure is acceptable to Verizon Wireless. We proposed the chain link fence because the batting cage is a chain of fences, staff said with a mesh to match the batting cage. So that's why that finished design is what it is proposed in the plan. But if the commission desired to change to a block wall to help keep that sound, that would be acceptable to us.
This this is a, you know, every time one of these situations where somebody wants to put a tower in, noise comes up. And I'm sure it's not just Seaside, it's everywhere where. So why don't, I I would personally like to see some sort of sound insulation put in as part of the acceptance of this. If it's the wall or whatever would work the best.
You mentioned that there was the drainage area, why wouldn't why wouldn't that work?
The the drainage areas.
Yeah, it was it was one of the options.
There's a retention basin.
Yeah.
Just just to the west. That's detailed in the. Just to the west. That's detailed in the staff report rather than guess. I'd like, Open space area, Coab and Monterey Road, in your packets, a cage that looks like this.
Sixty-two over here, right now.
It is a retention basin, which means it's an area that is subject to holding water and flooding. And it would also require construction of a new structure. So, rather than... To go to the question that was asked earlier, is it a new pole or an existing pole? It's a replacement pole. So, we are taking down the old pole for this. It's a common way to have a dual-use structure. The existing pole comes down for structural reasons, the equipment. Sir, you asked how much is a weight. I don't have the exact sheets, but just a quick calculation, all the equipment, about 1,300 pounds. So, when we do that, we replace the pole with a pole that's engineered to hold that weight, the existing light structure, handle all seismic loads, wind loads, and everything with it. It doesn't go in the exact location, it moves 10 feet over. And why that is done is because we put it in the exact spot, have to take the old tower down, pour the foundation with concrete to cure, put the new tower up. So, the lighting system in the park would go down for an extended period of time, typically a month and a half. If we move the pole 10 feet, as we proposed to do, put the new pole there, the lighting system is not used for one night. And that one night is just the testing night on the cut over from the existing system to the new system. So, to answer the immediate question, was it was a retention basin subject to flooding, which means you look at its property, and, well, we can't use it, it's why it's
Yes, I have a few questions. I don't know if they should be directed to you, if you can address the Hamilton Edison ages. What's the question? Those are the consulting. Basically, the question is, on the study results, it says, "For a person anywhere at the ground, maximum RF exposure level is blah blah blah."
Okay. We got a spot there. We can't use the whole...
No, I've just, I've got a question on the...
On the study?
On their study.
Make sure they offer a call.
Not looking for help, I'm just trying to understand, because it's... The study results say that it's under the exposure level. But, I'm not sure what RF exposure level, how that corresponds to the chart that has microwave, Wi-Fi, BRS, WCS, et cetera. So, what exactly is RF, you know, the radio frequency exposure level? How does that correspond to all these public limits that are listed here?
The calculations that are provided in the report, the calculations that were done in the summary, were used using the specific frequencies that Verizon Wireless was licensed to use at the site. So, the calculations and the percentage of FCC emissions, allowable emissions, is specific to the frequencies that are licensed and would be put in use. So, it's a specific report where you have a guideline that lists a bunch of different types of frequencies as an explanation as to what's being talked about.
Well, then, let me drill down a little bit deeper under that. Basically, it says, if I'm understanding correctly, that .048 MW dash CM2 blah 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 is 8% of the applicable exposure limit. Is that, for example, over here, 700 megahertz to .20? Is it 8% of that, or is it 8% of, you know, I don't, I never met a number I liked, so, just trying to clarify. And I am not an engineer, and what I do know is that it complies and it's specific to the equipment being installed. That's what the report demonstrates. I don't mean to try to dodge your question. I don't know how to answer it, and I want to trust them with all my heart. But, we've got kids over there. So, I just want to make sure that the summation on the RF exposure level is accurate as far as all these other numbers go. And I don't know how best to address that, it's all on here.
I think it's very well addressed in the conditions of approval that the city's put forward. And you say, "Well, how?" There's a report here that's produced by a third-party engineer that says, "Yes, this project will comply with the FCC's emissions." The last...
That may be true, but I don't know how it corresponds to these public limits. What... I can't get that 8% number from any of these.
Page thirty-two.
Thank you. Impacted page thirty-two, conditions seventeen and eighteen are two conditions that do not ask you to trust the engineer's report. They actually require testing in the field before the site goes in operation and then after any modification. So, this is not looking to test the calculations. This is actual, in-the-field readings to prove that the engineering, the theoretical engineering report based off the frequencies was accurate and that the site complies. And these are two conditions I mentioned earlier Verizon Wireless could accept, and these are things that we're seeing quite often.
I would really appreciate it if your consultants would tell us what RF, how it corresponds to all those numbers. That's what I would appreciate. I can appreciate what seventeen and eighteen say, and I appreciate that they're gonna test it afterwards, but we're gonna build this thing, and it's there.
As was mentioned by staff, this really isn't the form to go through it, but if the city would like, that could be something that could be done from an educational standpoint with staff and the commission outside of this project to explain those details. That's often done as well.
And then, just a couple of things to clarify. So, if I heard you correctly, we can, as the city, specify that that test of the generator's gonna occur at 12:30 to 1 o'clock on Wednesday if we want.
That is correct, yes.
And that the test, the runtime, if I heard you correctly, is only five to 10 minutes. It's not an hour, it's not two hours, it's a short period.
It's to run the diagnostics, and what it does is a complete warm-up to run through its cycle, and then it shuts down. So, that typically is a five to 10 minute cycle. In really cold areas, it takes longer, but this isn't a really cold area.
And just a question for the ball field. When the new pole goes up, the old one comes down, new pole goes up, do the same lights go up that were on the old pole, or will there be new lights?
Same lights. And what they do is we move them over, and we work the... This is a Musco system, so we have Musco's engineers look at the lights and say, "You're moving them over 10 feet, set them up this way." And they give us that schematic, we move the lights over, and then at night, go out and take the meters and make sure that they're adjusted properly for function.
And if we do come back with condition on the block wall, any estimate on how much that would cut down on that 65 megahertz zone?
If the generator was running and you were on the outside of the wall, typically with like park noise, you would not really know what's going on behind the wall. I've been on the other side of the wall, and they've been on, and it's with the ambient level of parks and commercial areas, by commercial areas where there's activity.
And just one last question on moving the generator from the batting cage over. I understand you were there and you watched the kids warm up and all that kind of stuff. I can only tell you from personal experience with grandson who plays there literally every week, that most of the kids are out around the batting cage, and that's where a lot of them warm up, especially during tournaments. So, moving that, whatever it is, the chain link enclosure, block fence over closer to the actual light pole, you're actually moving it into a place where fewer kids actually warm up and do things, just FYI.
If... That would be something that we would not object to. If the council could or the commission be specific with where they would like that, so we could revise the plans for their future people. Thank you very much.
Okay. We keep talking about the Wednesday, but my big thing is, is if power goes out, white people are there. As you say, it's a 30 horsepower. Each lawnmower is about a 5 horsepower, so you're talking about six lawnmowers going off at one time while the kids are on the field for 30 horsepower. I bet around when the generators are tested, the sound does eliminate the sheet metal noise from the closure of it, but the exhaust noise is still coming out with 30. What can you guys do for the exhaust noise?
They do have quite a robust muffler, but if the generator is the key sticking point for the commission, what we could do is remove the generator from the project and add additional batteries. So, that would extend the life, but that would not be a long term. So, we would be talking about, instead of, okay, the batteries that would last a few hours, we would have a battery system that would last a day. We would not have a battery system that would provide service for an extended period of time. So, the... What's regard to the comparison to lawnmowers, it's more a comparison to a car with a modern exhaust system and a good muffler. They... The old diesel ones, the large AC ones, when they do fire, yes, they were quite large diesel engines. The smaller ones, smaller horsepower. They're much quieter. So, you have the mufflers on it. Then, we could use the, you know, we could use the quietest muffler available. I don't know what that model number is, so I could have that conditioned, but we could demonstrate that to staff and to the city. But, a generator is important for long-term reliability of that.
Okay. Can staff put up the yellow area again, too, please?
These are, I mean, I estimated this...
No, not that yellow, the yellow area that they said they had no coverage in.
Oh, coverage now? So, I'm going the wrong way?
Okay, when we talked about the yellow, how much of that is actual developed area? And we say that we have no coverage in the yellow. To me, that looks like the whole woodland area where we walk up on the big yellow stuff. Is that what that is?
Your military housing. Do you know possibly where the military housing is? Which one? The area?
So, in comparing this to the previous map, what you would have is service to the high school and homes, and to Mobile Home Park immediately, and then homes up north of the immediate homes near the site and the golf course area, where there are users in all of those areas.
Okay. And then, our second question was, you said staff mentioned a location at the old gas station and such. Was...
That was also part of the military base and has the same use restrictions that prohibit leasing to a wireless carrier at this time. And that's been the case and the effort to pursue a solution to that for a very long time, and there is no time period for an expected resolution to those issues.
Right. I know further up the hill, we have the water tank, right at the corner of General Jim Moore and Co. Avenue. Is that Seaside owned, Glenn?
The reservoir?
No, no.
The water, that's Raina Coast, yeah.
That's what?
Raina Coast.
Raina Coast owns that Seaside area right there in that corner?
That's a back.
Or they just, they're replacing the generator right now?
This is on the ridge, right back, you can see it on the highway?
No. This is right at the corner of General Jim and Co. There's, and then Military Avenue, if you went through the gate right there, there's a large tank.
Oh, you're talking about MPWMD. That's their site that they're currently, for the Santa Margueta, Jacksonville.
But, is that area owned by Seaside?
No.
No? Okay. Just thinking that there gotta be a better place for this thing than this So, we've got 1,300 pounds above, 42 feet of, right at the field. Just seems like an awful lot of weight right there up in one corner of the baseball field. Not to mention the site, but... Okay, that's all we have for today. Thank you for your expertise on it. Appreciate your answers.
Thank you. If there are any other questions that might come up, I'd be glad to come back up and answer them.
Okay, we will open this up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter can
Hi, my name's Melissa, and I live in Seaside Highlands. I know someone touched upon not touching upon the health issues.
There we can.
Why is that? Because that's my number one concern, being right next to...
Staff, either you or the attorney, we can...
We do not engage during public comment. She can address you, we will address her questions after.
Okay. We'll get, we'll answer your question as soon as we're out of public comment, but it is a law, basically, by the federal guidelines, I believe. But, the attorney will, I'll have him explain it to all of us, so...
Okay, so, I should make my comments later?
No, public comment is only open for now. So, any comments that you wish to make on this item, let's do so now. Your answers will come forth afterwards, but...
I see. Even though it's...
If I make, public comment is not interactive, voided, versus the public comes up and they put down their list of comments, questions, and it goes to the commissioner, and he will then, after the end of public comment, he will address the different parties that you seem to address the issues. That's how it runs.
Thank you.
Understandable. So, I know that it says that the reports show that the applicants in compliance to the regulations, but I'm more concerned about the children and the housing so close, because when you go online and you do your own research, there's a lot of negativity about the cell phone radiation. And so, I'd like to know if they've done any reports through Verizon or a third party showing what those health effects would be of having that so close to children, a school, residential area. That would be my concern.
Okay, third party?
Like testing.
Okay.
I mean, just one study that was done by the National Toxicology Program, they concluded that there was clear evidence that in male rats, that they develop cancerous heart tumors from the constant exposure of the cell phone radiation. I mean, what is it gonna do to humans and children that are in the area? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this public comment? See, none. We'll close it and then bring it back. I don't think I need to restate those right now. The questions you have?
So, the issue about radio frequency emissions is that it's a jurisdictional question. Congress...
Do we, you know, do we like issue the record?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I found these certain elements.
Sorry. It's a jurisdictional question. Congress enacted the Telecommunication Act in 1996 and said that any emissions from cell phone towers that comply with the FCC's guidelines, any decisions on those towers cannot be based on RF emissions if they're compliant. So, the independent RF firm, Payman Edison, performed the analysis and indeed, they're compliant with the FCC's regulations. So, that's issue number one. The second issue regarding the rat study is that the study was done in close proximity to individual cell phone radiation, over a period of time, high exposure, long periods of time. These towers are actually much further than those studies were ever performed. So, there's no clear link between what this tower would do and what the results from the rat study was. And one of the curious outcomes of that study was actually that rats that were not exposed to radio frequency actually died quicker. So, there's a lot of uncertainties with respect to what happened in the study. Calling there a clear link between cancer and radio frequency is just not there at this stage. And, you know, beyond that, it's just prevented by federal law because this facility will comply with the FCC's rules. And then, as the gentleman mentioned, there will be an actual test performed at the end of the construction. They'll perform a lawn test to determine whether the actual measurement is compliant with the FCC rules as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we can bring this back to commissioners.
We talked about conditions.
I'll start. I'll, I'll start this one off first. I just don't think this is the proper place for this, um, I don't think it fits in. I think it looks like a big huge mustache on top of the light pole that was originally split there for lighting a field, not holding a tower. I, I realize that cost-effective wise, everything is, is like, this is a great thing, but I'm sorry, but when we, when we looked at this, the project and the seventy-foot light, they were strictly for lighting a hall field. They were not for putting anything on top of them so that we could, uh, basically, uh, take care of, uh, any of the wireless companies that wish so, so... My thought is that I just think we could find a much better place for this than so for field. My other problem is the, obviously, the location of the generator, the whole thing, right at the batting cages and stuff, I just think it's, it's poorly planned and it's not thought out as far as what the field was put there for. Foot, the field was put there for baseball, soccer, so on. So to me, um, it just doesn't fit. It, it, it doesn't look right and that's just my opinion.
Um, I wholeheartedly agree, I think, uh, you know, people don't put this kind of infrastructure on other public places, like would we throw this on a beach? You know, would we put this where, you know, the community convenes? It just feels like a, a, a terrible place for infrastructure. Um, I also think that the enclosure for the generator would negatively impact the, the way that, um, people are interacting on the field. It would be ugly, it would be loud, it would take up space that kids are using for fun, um. I request that if that building is built, it at least has some aesthetic appeal and isn't just chain link fence, um... But yeah, in general, you know, I, I would say that I dislike the idea of putting infrastructure on our public space.
I have to agree, nothing else to... I just said, I have to agree with what's, uh, this spoken so far.
Yeah, it is, it is a tough one, but it is, um, our chair owns head, uh, stated field is for the children. It's, it's kinda like, um, it was initially purposed for this, it would, but would n- never have any intent of giving it an alternate purpose or an additional purpose for that. And, and I do realize that there are other spots that were scouted and that could fulfill it. Um, but going by the thought that that area was, was meant to be for the children and for sports and, and such and to just suddenly just pop up a, a tower in, it's, it's almost like an intrusion, um... Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a fan, so I'm sorry.
Well, I think we're all agree that we prefer to see it somewhere else. I, I concern though is we, we don't have sufficient grounds to deny it. Uh, we can say we don't like it there, but they have gone through the alternate site, um, uh, looking at the alternate sites and it sounds like this was the only one that satisfied all the criteria. So if we were to deny it, I, I don't think it would stick. We've, again, referring back to other situations like this, uh, it wasn't that long ago, they were trying to put them on church steeples.
They did.
And they did. Uh, in the middle of residential neighborhood, it's much more densely packed than this. So, um, my feeling is, and this is sort of a pragmatic point of view, is that it's probably gonna be there, even if we don't like it. So my preference then is to at least address the noise issue, which is something we can do. Um, I guess that's it.
My children use this park all the time, my grandchildren, I should say, use this park all the time, so I'm definitely not for this tower to be here. But again, like my commissioner next to me said, even if we say no to the city council, the city council has already said yes. So we're in a conundrum, um... As you said, it needs to be aesthetic, we're gonna have to have it, and I believe a block wall doesn't aesthetic be looking. Block wall's gonna have to happen, um, generator has to move, cannot be there, and the tower has to be camouflaged as if it were a tree. It's ugly, it's horrible, and I don't wanna bear that. Go ahead.
Being new. I understand the concerns and the, the purposing and all that. I, I don't personally have a problem with repurposing, never have. Uh, if it's a creative solution to a, a pressing problem, uh, living in the Highlands, the coverage is terrible, period. I don't know what it is beyond the Highlands, but it is pretty miserable. Um, having a grandson that plays there literally every week, I'm all for making this as, as sound effective as possible, as aesthetic looking as possible. Uh, I'm not really a big fan of the fake trees, I've seen those all over, no offense, I think, I think they're a great idea, I've just never seen one that looked even be, be any better than a, a light pole with a, um, cover on it. It, it is a light pole, it already is ugly, um, but at least its function is a light pole, so I understand, you know, the concern about leaving it that way. But putting, you know, some new antenna array halfway up the pole isn't something that, that grabs my attention. All the parents of those games got their cell phones out, they're using them all the time, so I understand that. And, you know, if we're kinda between a rock and hard place, then I say we go with some conditions that make it aesthetically pleasing as we can and definitely address the sound, especially in an emergency.
There was a separate option, uh, mentioned about batteries rather than the generator. And in my experience, we haven't had many altitudes that lasted longer than a day. I'm wondering if that's something we wanna consider, since it was put out there as an, an option.
Talk to the city attorney on this one here. This, as I say, it's a tough one here between us all. But when we look at aesthetics with the planning permission, isn't that a viable reason? I mean, when we look at what the planning commission does is we, we basically are land use. So obviously that's why you're here, but also we look at how it's going to be presented within the community.
Yeah.
And, uh, what is our fight on that? So when we look at something that's just so, obviously, you can say you put a screen around it, but, uh, a duck is a duck. And you can see it at forty-two feet near, so what is our ground plan?
You know, the physical infrastructure, wireless equipment is, is going to be apparent, right? It's, it's, it, it can't be completely invisible unless it's on like a building behind a, a parrot wall that's fabricated with our transparent screening. When you're in these types of open space areas, it is much more difficult to find a legitimate screening mechanism, what we like to call stealthing, right? Uh, the trees can look okay at times, but if, if the planning commission is interested in going down alternative designs and locations, we'd actually, uh, staff would like to request a continuance on this matter rather than making a decision here at this time. That allows, uh, additional time to go back to the applicant for design and location potential, uh, uh, discussion, so, uh, no decision initially has been made tonight, but, um, if the, the planning commission is giving us that direction, we, we'd rather go that down that route than, than, uh, than a denial.
My other question is this, kids that are playing right there, we've got exhaust fumes coming out of that. I know the health reasons for RFI is off limits, but not carcinogens coming out of a gas-fired engine? Why you have kids right there?
I, I think the, the solution to that would be the batteries instead of the, so you give rid of the generator and replace it with batteries.
But here's my problem with that. We've been bit a lot of times by utility companies when we give them certain rights within the city and things to do. Once they have their permit and they say, well, that is no longer functioning, we need to upgrade. How does that, what be, what started out as a battery pack now becomes an upgrade to make the system better, which they stated, staff stated that they have the right to do. Well, all they gotta do is come and say, well, the, the, we've got our permit now, we've got our tower, we've got what we want, and the fact of the matter is the batteries aren't working, we need the generator.
The, the, the best way to go about that would be condition any approval on compliance with the applicable Public Health and Safety Code. So if there are noxious fumes, that those fumes would be compliant, um, with, with whatever, uh, standard there is in place for those types of fumes in, 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 in clo- closed areas.
Okay. Well, I like Scott's idea of continuing this so that we can see a different array of things, so that aesthetic-wise, um, housing-wise, whatever it may be, so I, I'm up for that, um, but I'm gonna leave that to the rest of the commissioners at this point. So, if you want any questions?
I'm motioning that we go with the continuance for staff to come back with more information for us on alternative ways to handle this.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I hate certain...
I, I think we wanna do date certain. I mean, we could always be noted, but, um, for our attorney?
Right.
You think certain would be preferable?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're coming up with a delay, aren't you?
Uh, San Diego, I'm on it.
Just one.
Yeah. Um, but I don't know...
February thirteenth would be the, of earlyst.
Well, one thing to, to keep in mind is, is how long it takes to get, uh, the Verizon board with proposing potential alternatives, so that may take in, uh, some additional discussions. I'd rather not put it to a date certain maybe we can...
So we'll notice it.
Unless you are, are okay with getting it up within the next ten to two days.
Are we gonna reopen the hearing, start to speak or speak out? Um, no, they, we're, we're to a point where a motion has been made to continue this. We would like, we would like a date certain, and if we could go two months, we could have the stuff for you. There you go, I have it. Two months, so staff will give us a date then.
March thirteenth. Either March thirteenth or March twenty-seventh.
I'll be March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh? Is that where it's covered?
So we would have to have an addition, addition to...
Okay. So... So, so we'll continue this to March twenty-seventh? Or otherwise noted, date? Okay? All right, we're moving on now, um... Reports from commissioners. Just had one question about... Uh, reports from staff.
Um, I want to thank, congratulate Mr. Evans for stepping up and...
I'm sorry.
Being on the planning commission.
That was a rude, uh, chair here. Does anybody know David Evans, our new planning commissioner? You would just give him your name and say hi? He's, uh... John Owens?
Thanks, bud. Probably turn the mic up?
Oh, it's a good question.
Welcome to the committee, you're a, uh, a local site, thank you. Staff?
Um, you would probably have more to work at our next meeting, so I will discuss with Gloria what other things are coming up that we think we need to make you aware of and put on calendars.
Very good, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Ooh, wait, can I?
Oh, 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 sorry.
I just wanna inform you guys that tomorrow night, the city council's holding a special meeting to consider all the applicants who have put in for the vacant city council meeting, um, position, member position. Meeting starts tomorrow night at five-thirty, if you wanna be present. The council voting will not take place until the January seventeenth meeting, so all the applicants will be given a three-minute presentation. You can watch them on television or you can watch them on our website if you want to tomorrow night or thereafter.
I'm just curious, does that help the council meetings and go on forever? Is that, is that part of the agenda or...
It's the only thing on the agenda for tomorrow, but on the seventeenth, it will be at the end of the agenda for discussion and voting.
And we have a motion for adjournment.
I'm in for motion to adjourn.
Second? We've got a second, all in favor? Five. Is anyone opposed? Thank you.